Okay, got it. Um. There was a couple of other provisions in that one twenty-one thirty-one that apply. And let's see, the one is that we, what's the one that we talked about last month or two regarding the Bennett Lot Road subdivision? That's one twenty-one thirty-one G and as you recall, after a if a project's gone to public hearing. And within a, a thirty days of that or sixty days of one without a public hearing. The planning board has to act up to one of three things. One is to approve the plan, second is to prove a plan with 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 conditions, and the third is to disapprove a plan. And we were on the brink of that, as you recall, on the Bennett Lot proposal. And they and they withdrew the application rather than deal with our decision on that, so that that resolved it in another way. And but that that process, we were going through that process when the applicant made their decision to withdraw the application. The other one. Um. Is the end of that section J one twenty-one thirty-one J. And that states, if during the preliminary plan review process, an applicant does not appear before the board for a period of six months. The project shall be considered abandoned and its status as a pending preliminary plan shall be forfeited. And we have projects where that's the case, where 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 the the preliminary plan has not been approved. They're in the process of doing it and we haven't gotten. A notification on anything from applicants. So these are the cases where the app, the ordinance requires that we. Resolve the status of the application and either act on it or or suspend the application. Or we don't suspend the application, we we say the application is is not not not, it goes back to where they started. So those are, those are the instances where that happens under one twenty-one twenty-one thirty-one and thirty-four. And. Um. We have, so any question on that? It's just, it's just, it's just to make sure that. A, a project that is proposed and it goes goes dormant, they don't have the activity, that they have, they, they put the. Onus is put on the applicant to keep the application alive. They have to come see us, they come talk to us, they have to update us. And if they go away under these conditions, they can't come back beyond those things and pick up where they left off. And so that, that's, that's common in many ordinances and there on our ordinance. So. Um. We have a one application. The Mick Construction Meadow Pond Estates Phase Three. Which was last reviewed on December twentieth. Of two thousand twenty, so it's a nine months ago. And. So that's well over a period of six months. So them not having taken action within six months. Uh, that, that would be their status as of now. And we thought that we ought to go through the projects and apply these things. And then Joe, Russell, as the code enforcement officer and administrative person for the planning board would need to. Make communications to these various people that indicate that they're, they're lapsing and that they have to do something to get gap, get back in. Um. So that's, that's a discussion item, any questions about that? I think based on this discussion tonight, if anybody has any questions about it. Uh, we. But, uh.
I have some more comments.
Plan on making, um.
Can you guys, can you hear Manley? Go ahead.
I, I have.
In my.
Some comments when you're ready. Are you ready?
Hear me. Oh, dear.
Okay, I have, I can hear you.
We can hear you, Joe.
Uh. Can you guys not hear Manley?
Yeah, I can hear Manley and I can hear Bill, but Bill, it seems can't hear us.
Going on here. Um, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna come, I'll see if it works. I think it's on my problems on my end, I'm gonna leave the meeting and I'll come back, okay?
Okay.
You just started coming in real clear.
Oh wait, now I'm back.
Yes.
You are.
Back. I'm not, I'm not gonna touch anything.
It might be the weather.
Okay, so go ahead, Manley.
Phil, can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine, Manley, thank you.
That's good, so I had some comments, if I can remember them now. So. Um, one is, I think these are things that we've been lax on.
Yep.
Uh, so I don't mind. Starting to toe the line for these people, but I would like to have them have a notice. Now that they must do something within thirty days or. They're well beyond their limits and they'll have to start over or whatever it is. Uh, so that we're not all of a sudden starting to enforce it when in the past we haven't.
I, that's a very good point. And, go ahead.
The other thing is, on that. Thirty to sixty days after a public hearing, I would like to see that changed. And I'd like to see the public hearing. Right at the front of the preliminary process. And so that everybody can get on board. That's in the neighborhood that wants to have import and not to be at the end of the process where we've. Put all our thoughts into, but the neighbors haven't had the option to give us their thought patterns. David wants to speak, I've got something else, but we'll go with that.
Finish your thoughts, Manley, then we'll, we'll come back.
Okay, um. I, I think that's pretty much it for now, it's actually slipped my mind, I had one other thought, but I'll pick it up a little later.
That's great. On the, on the, on your first suggestion, I had a conversation, email conversation with Amy and Joe. And and we realized we need to catch up with these things and so we clarified which ordinances apply. I, I fully support your idea that. If they, they should be notified that this is coming. And, uh, and I, I'm, it's out of the ordinance, but it's not in the ordinance, but I don't know if we can. Because we haven't been consistent with it, we, we could give them a thirty day period to tell us what they want to do and we could consider.
A grace period, if you will, a play.
David, David, is that something we can do, you think?
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of things on this, I did go back, I know that Afar is the engineers on that project. Uh, on the, uh, excuse me, the Meadow Pond subdivision. And, um, the last email that I had was just to Joe and Amy and you, Bill. And that was back on May twelfth. And I sat in it, I, I reached out to Brian on the project about three months ago. At the time, Brian said he was still active, but I haven't heard anything since. Um, I've been following up with him, so I might as well, if the board wants me to, I can follow up and put something in writing and say. You're basically sixty day, you know, give us thirty days to know if you want to keep this open, otherwise we're gonna withdraw it for inactivity.
Okay, that's fine, again, give him that grace period, that's fine.
Thirty days.
I think thirty is fine.
Okay.
No.
I thought of what I was, the other thing I was thinking, I think if we could reduce this down to a, a writing to a slip. And then when someone comes on board with a project, we'll either email them or I will give them this. This is your, this, this is your warnings.
Yeah, and I think, I think to be fair, uh, we just should do that and 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 have it a standard item so that we keep track and have a schedule and. Um, we had several years ago, we had one. That. Punkin Town Place project and they had approval and then they didn't build it within a certain period of time. It was required and it was during a recession and da, 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 oh, lights going off. Um, and, um. And they came back and we had to amend their approval to allow them to go into construction later than than we did. So we worked with them and of course now they're there. So I think, I think that's possible and we should do that, so, okay, Amy.
And can David, can you make something up? Like a spreadsheet of some sort as to beginning to start off the process when somebody first comes in front of us?
Yeah, sure, you want spreadsheet?
Yeah, make it easy, yeah. Okay, so the communications, we had talked about Joe making communication, uh, I'm fine with David making it and he's familiar with the applicant. And so if he makes it on behalf of the board, that's fine with me.
Fine with me.
Me too.
Yeah, and it could be something as easy as a standardized, standardized letter. Also that I could easily draft up and then it'd be for the code officer signature and he just fill in the dates that we have on our spreadsheet.
In terms that, that Meadow Pond business, um, you, you could have something in writing.
Oh, yeah.
But if they don't get, come in, we're gonna have to go back to the ordinance and then apply the ordinance.
Right.
Now, it could be as easy as them coming and giving us an update, proposing a schedule or whatever. And we can, we can judge based on that how open ended to leave it.
Okay.
I, I think part of the problem is. The D E P sometimes takes. Um, a period of time and I don't know how we reconcile that to work with our ordinance, but.
Right. I, I, I think if we send them a notification saying, we haven't heard from you, you've got thirty days. If they were to write back to us and say, we have our plans at D E P currently, I think that's an update that keeps them alive.
That's right.
That's, that's fine with me, but I, just long we have something in there to reconcile it because of something that's out of their control.
Right, okay, good, good solution.
And so how do we do this going forward? Cause like this particular project, when something gets on to our agenda. Does a timeframe do that or does the project, do the project people put tasks to be put on? I always thought it was time based, that it got on there because it was about time that we requested to see, is, how does that happen?
But mostly they're in control. So they, they come with a concept, they come with a sketch plan, they, they proceed with a preliminary plan. Uh, and if they keep going, most of it's in their control, we, we can request things as we feel are appropriate and under the ordinance, but. Um, uh, most, mostly they're in control of the, of the schedule, working with Joe and Amy and and David to coordinate it. It always works pretty well.
Yeah.
But it, it, the, you gotta remember that the projects are the applicant's projects, we have a process, we don't advocate for them, we don't. We don't, but we're not negative towards them, we have to apply our process and that's what we're talking about.
I just wasn't sure if, if. If it was on a timeline, like, like the ordinance is saying, we, you know, within thirty, thirty days, we need to hear back if we're putting it on. And then they're being notified or or not, so it does, it all comes from them, so, okay, that, that's clear in my mind.
I, I think we have a sheet right up front and we show them the timelines, but what I don't wanna, what I don't think is good is. For the onus being put on us to notify them, I don't mind notifying if we, we think of it. But I'd like to see a sheet right up front says, this is your fear one, and if we remember, we mind. But it's, it's your baby to keep up with the schedule.
Yeah, but, but I, I think if you keep, if, if we do keep the spreadsheet as they get before the board, all it takes is for. Um, whoever's keeping track of that, whether it be me or somebody, a consultant, or whether it be Amy or or the code officer. As long as every meeting is listed out when they, when they occurred. Um, some of them I've kept track of when we were doing Bennett Lot because we'd seen it so many times, I listed the, the dates out. But as long as we keep that spreadsheet going, I think, you know, there's a, we suddenly realize, wow, it's been, you know, four months since we've heard them. It sort of triggers us to go, well, yeah, maybe we should get back to that one.
Another example was the C N P, that's their substation they wanted to put up off of Wally Lane. They went away, they never came back and we, I think, David, you reached out to them, said, what's, what's going on? And they said, sorry, we're, we're gone.
Right, right.
We've gone to the ordinance, we would have determined that they were gone because they had, and, uh, and, and there's people that were interested in that project. And there was some confusion in the public side, what, what, you know, is it active, is it not active and all that kind of stuff? So I think the, the crisper we can be with, with these things, the better. Um, to add Manny's other comment or question about. Uh, people raise that over the years and the idea of the, the formal public hearing on a preliminary plan is one thing. And I think you're, you're searching mainly for what, we do something earlier before it's cast in stone, should, should do something at the sketch plan level. And the public's certainly welcome to come to any meeting. And we, we tried to be as, and we asked the applicants to informally notify all the abutters. Uh, even when they came in with sketch, so we, we've got, everybody knows it, we don't, we do, we do not have a formal. Uh, forum for to take. Input early in the process, I think that's what you were talking about.
It is, I guess if my thoughts would be, soon as they get preliminary approval, schedule a public hearing. And then, then move forward, the sketch plan, it's, I think it's too early because they haven't had our input or anything.
Well, to, right now, when they do a preliminary plan, then that goes to public hearing. And the question is, is it, would it be valuable to have public input at some level before they get to preliminary? David, you got an idea?
Yeah, actually, uh, couldn't be better timing on Manley's part because just earlier today, you probably even haven't seen it, Bill. But earlier today, I was thinking about this very thing because there was some ordinance stuff that we've been talking about in the past year. And I happen to be working in another municipality and I really liked some of their ordinance language. And, um, it, well, it was, it was the city of Saco. And they actually require at the very front end of a, of a proposal, so they can come for a sketch plan. I didn't share all the language with the board members because I don't, I didn't want to get into a discussion. But this is certainly a document that I can send over to everyone, I basically organized it. Uh, but it talks about their, when they have to do it and it applies to both site plans. And subdivisions over a certain kind and it, it requires them to do a neighborhood meeting. It requires them to take notes. Um, attendees, and so there's all kinds of requirements and I thought it's a, a really good way. Because the few projects that I've been in front of their board on or been discussing and working with folks. That, that input right at the very, very beginning, at least people in the neighborhood, we have meeting minutes that are given to the board. We can know what issues came up. Right at the very beginning, we can work through it and then we do our own set of public hearings to meet our legal requirements.
Okay.
But I, I can share that language with you to be discussed at next meeting if you'd like, I mean, I have it right in front of me.
I saw the email come through, I didn't, didn't read it, Amy.
So, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
My take on this, um, only because I don't think we should be adding another meeting. I, in the mix, when we're already asking the applicant to notify the abutters after we see them at preliminary here, at the preliminary stage. If the abutters are notified within the amount of time after the preliminary. Initial meeting, isn't that suffice?
What, what, what we don't have is we don't have a formal mechanism. To receive their input other than just to log in emails and letters.
Why can't they just then, we tell them to come to the next meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we've been doing in the past, so what, I guess what I'm asking David is, are you planning, are you saying that in between the preliminary? And then let's say they come back in two more meetings, right? In between that time, you want to hold a neighborhood meeting?
They would hold a neighborhood meeting, the applicant would hold a neighborhood meeting. It's, it's not anything sanctioned by the board, but the board would be, or the applicant would be required to turn over meeting minutes. Uh, who is attending and things like that. Again, it, it's just an early way to get folks in the neighborhood to get their input. Right when the board is starting to think about it, the neighborhood's thinking about it. I, I just thought it was a neat language that was worth looking over.
I agree with you, I just want to make sure that the, if, if we're gonna, if we're as a board wanting to tell them the applicant, they have to take care of holding a meeting. Yep. To let, you know, let the abutters and 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 get that all together and then they're in charge then to bring us all of that information at their next meeting. I don't know that that can be made a policy.
I don't want to make it any more complicated, what, what I'm trying to do is. At the end, right now, it seems like just at the end of the process, just before we're voting for the final approval. We're having a public hearing, I just would like.
The, the public hearing is, is, is granted at, 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 at the preliminary plan, so. And we, if, if that's not, it's not at the end, it's, it's at the middle.
Right.
One of the things we could do is we could, when they do a sketch plan, we could, if, if they've. Notified the abutters. Allow a, a formal. Uh, or not a formal, but a recognized. Input, when we're asking the guys questions, the, the abutters could ask guy, to the question, so get, get their ideas or questions out there. Maybe that would be a, a, the time to do it at, at the evening.
That sounds good.
I, I have an idea, could we list at a, for a meeting, let's say, if that's gonna occur, we tell the abutters, hey, at this meeting, on this date. The applicant's gonna be sitting here and they're going to take your questions and they're gonna give comments, gonna give feedback.
And this is before they propose a, a, a formal plan, this is the sketch plan. So, so they can hear, well, you know, we're worried about the, the foxes here or the turtles there or the setbacks here or the visibility here. And just get out whatever they want to get out so that the applicant can decide whether to take that into account as they're putting their plan together.
Right, so that when they come back to you, they've already heard those people, we've given those, those abutters the opportunity to come in and, and actually have a verbal conversation with the applicant. Not with us, right, because that's at a public hearing.
Yeah, right, I think, I think.
I'd like to put the onus on the applicant, not on us.
Absolutely.
But, but, but have it at what are, it has to be at our meeting and has at the sketch plan stage, okay, let's, let's.
Right, and I, and I think we almost already do it and we've been asking folks to notify abutters. But I was thinking just some kind of language that's not a request to the abutters, you, you must do it.
What we don't.
Right.
We're giving them the opportunity to actually talk to us, you know, here, here's where the opportunity is, we, we're being transparent in the sense that. We're willing to listen to what you have to say, but this is where we're, when we're doing it.
What we don't do now is we don't allow them to get inputs, get the applicant to get questions from the interested parties. Um, um, ever. They, they come to, they come to a hearing with us, but they can have their own conversation, we can, we can have a process where that's allowed, I think that's a good idea. And I, I mainly, people have raised the same thing with me over the years and, and I think it's timely because that whole Bennett Lot business. It happened, everybody got their input out there, no question about it. If we had, if we had facilitated that early on, I don't know what it changed anything, but it would have been.
I don't think it would have changed anything, I don't feel bad for the people around there at all, they had plenty of opportunity to put the input. But I think this is a general rule, some type of process when they accuse us of keeping it secret, was to wait a minute. Um.
Yeah.
This, this is a process, we follow the process, if you get a better one, let us know.
Yeah, I, I don't mind trying to maybe work with David and Joe and put something together where whenever we decide that meeting's going to be. Um, after, you know, once we see it and they're in front of us, then we say, okay, now we're gonna, our first project, we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna try this out and let, let it see what happens.
I, I, I think, I think it focuses on, at, at the sketch level, because most people, our, our ordinance is written that, that, that people would really come in with a sketch. Well, they don't do that anymore, they come in with a project. And, uh, so, okay. All right.
Sorry, Bill.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, would, I think a lot of good brainstorming here and, and kind of streamlining it seems to make a little bit of sense. But we're talking about an ordinance. How, how much authority do we have to, to, like, right now, we've been requesting that they talk to the abutters? Are we, is this an ordinance change that we have to propose to the town council?
It could be, it could be a system.
Well, it, it depends on, on how you want to adopt that, it could be a procedural type of thing. I do, I, I think it would be. Better to at least incorporate some language into the ordinance that says, you must notify the abutters. Before coming, for example, for your, you know, like, like Bill said, mostly we don't get sketch plans, you get fairly well-developed plans coming in. And at least notifying people, you know, other municipalities require the applicant to put a sign on the property saying, here's when this is gonna be discussed. You know, I don't, I don't see, I don't see, you know, it's not a huge cost to the applicant, probably in consultant fees, it'll cost them less money if they get some input early on. And I think the board then also enters the discussion with knowing a little bit about what the neighborhood says, so.
And, and, let's, uh, let's, uh, A, Amy's offered her efforts and and David's efforts and Joe's, let's, let's, let, let them come up with some ideas and we can kick it around. And if it's a procedural thing, it is, if it's actually an ordinance change, we can crystallize a, a, a simple ordinance recommendation against that. And.
So that's the subdivision plus. Site plan, site plan approval.
Well, I think it applied about, I think it'll be one twenty-one and one forty, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And Amy, I sent you the information earlier today, so you already have it.
Yeah, I got it, I, I think that one of, I, I just have to throw this out there because it's been on my mind, because I get all those, you know, and the rest of you, I score them too. We get all those emails, you know, and Bennett Lot was on there, we're getting a lot of emails and everybody had something that they had, they wanted to say that they wanted the planning board to hear from them individually as an abutter. So then, you know, we get it, we read it, we see it, well, then we can really have a dialogue with them.
Right.
Person A, and maybe that, the planning board doesn't need to have that dialogue, but the applicant needs to have the dialogue.
Right, and that was, that was my suggestion.
And so part of the ordinance, if we have to change the ordinance, and we'll find out if we do, like you said, is that the applicant is required to have a sit-down meeting during a scheduled planning board regular meeting. Where, you know, they're required to have that, that discussion and abutters are allowed, abutters per se have to be abutters. So we have to have that right language, right, that you just be, you know, live three or four miles down the road.
Yeah, keep in mind, I think that, that's all helpful, that's all, but we, but, you know, we, we have to be sure that. Uh, 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 assign our responsibilities to the public, all we're trying to do is to get the applicant to hear the abutters' concerns.
Yes.
Directly from the abutters. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, okay. That's great, so let's, let's, let's move in that direction, that's great. Um. So, uh, we have. Uh. Under old business, no, no application materials are in, we got listed N B D solar on Old South, we're all done with that, aren't we? Is there anything left, left, left we have to do? Is there anything left, left, left we have to do?
I had a question on that because I I the findings of facts for M D solar. On for Old South Road, were those finished?
They should have been.
I believe so.
Old South Road.
Yeah, right.
Did they come back after, didn't we have conditions on them?
Yes, and we haven't seen them.
I haven't, yeah. I thought the last meeting, we we set the conditions. Uh, I I'm, forgive me, I don't remember the conditions. I actually, I think I helped word it. But we set conditions and I don't think we've seen them since then.
Well, hang on. So we we approved it with conditions, yeah. And then we did a findings of fact, I believe, and and issued that to them, right? That's a question, not a statement.
David?
Well, I'm I'm looking it up right now. Let's see, we did the solar moratorium, which is in place, fi- final plan approval.
It wouldn't, uh, the last time they were here was on July seventh.
Yeah, correct.
And I and I'm sure we voted with conditions at night.
Someone was raising their hand. It flashed over on me, sorry. Uh, right, yeah, so the last time we were here was. Did we say June sixteen?
That was July seventh.
July seventh. They didn't, we didn't have the meeting on the sixteen because we had issues with the computers.
Okay.
So they were seen on July.
That's right, um. Yeah, the last report that I have looks like it's from seven, seven twenty-one.
But but the action, if we go back a minutes, we we approved it with conditions and the question is. Has the findings of fact been signed and and are they part of the, are the part of the project?
Did you write the finds on that, David?
Geez, I'm not seeing them here.
I looked today and I didn't see anything.
Yeah.
Because I think what it was is you guys were questioning, doing the findings of facts because of the conditions that you gave them. And so the conditions had to be met before. You guys are going to approve and and actually write out and approve the findings of facts.
I I think if we had a conditions, those are part of the findings effect and they can't get a building permit until they meet those conditions.
Uh, hold on one second.
My desk can get the minutes.
Uh, it, we're talking Old South Road.
You want me to go, David, and get mine?
Yeah, I'm I'm not, I'm not seeing it here, so if you want to do that, that'd be great. I thought we'd done.
I did too. I moved on.
Hold on, I'm opening up other documents here, so. I could, I can look it up and and get back to you here. Ah, wait, hold on, this might be it.
Oh, but Amy's getting her copy.
Yeah, again, the last one I've got is, I'm not seeing that here. Make sure I've got the. Most up to date, moratorium highlights. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any. In either place because usually I email them to you. And I also, I'm looking in my file folder for that one and I don't see findings of fact. Okay, well, I think they were getting this, I think they were getting us more information, weren't they? They, we had asked us.
I I, that's not my understanding. My understanding is we 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 took an action, took a final action, put conditions on them. So they could, they could move forward, but if they're not. Let's let's wait for Amy. So we need to sort that out before next time.
You got it. I have uh on the notes of that that meeting. Says, uh, Mr. Go makes a motion to accept the plan as is with conditions as follows. One. I F and W and D E P approval and permits are in place and met. Number two is Mr. Storts and a butters to receive written documentation from applicant regarding specific items discussed. Three, planning board would have the ability to amend the plans if permits come back unfavorable. And previous decisions need to be changed.
Okay, but then what 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 action was taken on that mo- motion?
It says next, it says, uh, Ms. Randall seconds the motion, vote five to zero approved.
So so there was a motion to approve the plan with those conditions, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, and that was, that was, so. Uh, I guess we'll have to ask the. Uh, Amy and David to and and Joe to sort out what 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 what's required administratively is the next step. Because I I I thought they would, they would get the permit with those conditions and they can't exercise the permit until they fill those conditions.
The the, I'm sorry, I'm just reading more on the notes. The next line says. Uh, Ms. Hurst cop asked how approval can be made if applicant. Has not addressed all the issues raised and submitted new material in question. Mr. Galbraith stated the planning board does not have to approve the final application without the material submitted. Mr. Staub stated the application can be approved with or without conditions listed at approval time. That's just what the notes from that meeting said.
So we voted five to nothing to 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 approve the project with those conditions.
Yeah.
Whatever they are. And so that that's an action that we took. And so question is, what what happens administratively after that?
Okay, it sounds like they have got to get their approvals, those two things and come back into us.
Right, but but I think, or or they not necessarily, unless that's why we had, if if the approvals create changes to the plan. They have to come back to us. If the approvals come in and Joe's satisfied that they're there. They could, they could exercise the 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 permit and get the building permit.
Okay, but we still don't have the finding as facts, right?
Right, that's what I'm asking.
That's, that's what I think I need to get to you folks.
Right, right.
Meeting.
Yeah, that's very specifically lay lay this out so that they have, they know what they have to do. Joe know what, Joe knows what he has to do.
That's right. Um, uh, Jeff, what date was that on? I'm sorry.
Um, hold on just a second. Looks like that was sent uh by Amy on August third. It was with the seven twenty-one minutes. Seven twenty-one meeting minutes, okay. Uh, yeah, it was sent on the same email, I guess, on August third, I I believe. Okay.
This is the um regular meeting of seven, seven.
Correct.
The last time that we talked with them.
Yeah, and and the the actions that Jeff is describing are in the minutes of seven, seven.
Okay, that's what, that's why I was making sure. All right. I I I think the ball's dropped on my end, maybe. I don't know.
Okay, well, let's let's clean, let's clean that up so that there's no ambiguity, yeah, okay. All right, then other old business we have is the other. Um, solar project that they came in with a sketch on Agamemnon's Road. They didn't get very far. It's been, they, that was last heard on May, on May ninth. Uh, six months will be. In November, so we'll, it goes, we'll see if they get going on that.
If we ought to send them a a thirty day notice saying you're coming to the end.
No, let's let's wait, let's wait, yeah, yeah, they they got time. Okay, okay.
It'd be good when David makes up a spreadsheet that, you know, these. These two um projects are put on there and with the dates that, you know. Right, ready, we we need to give them a notification.
Right, right. Um, I I'm gonna insert something here, um, before we get to member comments. Yesterday, Amy sent out um uh email material that was prepared by um council. Uh, Abby Campbell, who's I think on the call, and I had a call, I had a conversation with Jack Regas, council chairman today about that. And. We're not gonna take action yet. What 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 the council's doing is they're getting on with the. Uh, process of dealing with licensing and marijuana establishments. And at a point, they're gonna want to put performance requirements for those licenses probably back on the planning board, but they're not, we're not ready to. Do that yet. They're probably gonna do a joint workshop with us and perhaps Phil Saucy, the town attorney. To get the the context squared away. So that's in process and that's 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 worth noting to the group, but there's no action. Uh, requested at this time per the communication that Abby sent yesterday. That's a, that's a working process, so just just be aware that's coming. Um, and uh, the town council last night. Uh, adopted the um. Storefront, medical storefront regulations that we modified and 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 recommended back there, back to them a couple of weeks ago. They had a couple of minor modifications to it, but that's, I think, I think Jack explained to me that they were. Uh, they actually put an emergency authorization on us. That's an effect. That that that's good work done by all. Uh, and then the next step, we you recall, we recommended to them that they take up the licensing thing and that's what, that's what they're doing. They take up the licensing. Thing, which is a, it's a broader thing. And uh, uh, all things marijuana, keep on going.
They they are also the changes, when you first go into the land use code, they're flagged on on that link. Yeah, so people know that they're new items.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so. Uh, so anyway, yeah, everybody did it. It was a lot of work, but we 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 helped the process. The council's able to move with our input on all these things, the two citizens petitions and the other, these two ordinances, so we still have work to do, but we're we're getting there. And it's uh more complicated than I had ever guessed it would be. Anyway, okay, um. Uh, member comments, anybody have things they want to get out there to each other or the public? Okay.
Just hope you're feeling better, Manny.
Oh, yes. Uh, after the uh stand was put in, I haven't felt better for years.
That's great. I I know a lot of people and they get that, they go, whoo, that was great. So now you can run a five minute mile, right?
I don't run a five minute mile, but I'm putting in a longer day at work.
Okay, then uh, Manny, you want to make a motion that we always expect you to make?
Yes, I make a motion we adjourn.
Okay, here a second someplace?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jeff, okay. All in favor? Great.
All right.